Which isn't really dazzling yet.
Right.
And medics went up from 19 to 21, so it was higher than last week.
Sure, yeah.
So it's still not terribly competitive.
Okay.
And I wouldn't be surprised if we're going to continue to provide a medic service, we'll probably have to do that again.
Okay, so next year it could go up that much more, we don't know, okay?
It's our order.
But is there, I guess, is there an average hourly rate right now in the region for medics and EMTs?
Medics are in the high twenties in the north country still. Where our average is, where we're starting at 21, we probably are at 23 or 4 as an average.
So what we're, I mean...
And then our basics are, are probably average 16 and 17.
Okay.
But it's not a regional shortage, it's a nationwide shortage.
No, and we get, we get that.
But the labor is all I'm saying.
Yeah, but I get like, my question's more related around, you know, that just means that with a labor shortage, in addition to being under, you know, under the average for hourly rate, because of the nature of the beast, you're gonna have to, you're gonna be in a tough spot competitively, for sure.
With the range of per capita, I know that Callex is really fortunate. They're still in the $20 range, but they run over 3,000 runs a year. And so they have the revenue from calls tops that. So none of you were here when we set this up back in, I think it was 86. We had all the selectmen, first eight selectmen from every town come together. And set this up sort of as a co-op. So that, the agreement is that we're gonna run the service, but we don't, Louisville itself doesn't have money and that we pay through the town either.
Yep.
But we would run it, but the shortfall that's met, we get so much money from patient fees, insurance, daycare and so on. What that doesn't, if it doesn't meet the needs, then the towns would have to make it to the end. So that's where we're at, we're still doing the same thing.
Okay.
And that's the nature of a co-op, yes.
Okay, um, I guess, okay, and I understand the wages, you know, we're up, everybody's up, we get it. We understand that, um, I guess we're just making sure, I guess, that there's gonna be no interruption in our service and we have nothing to worry about in service and your personnel and being available to serve our town, I guess.
We, since COVID, pre-COVID, we had more people than we had spots to fill. And during COVID, that changed some, and Derek will tell you, he used to send, he was co-director last year. Would send out texts begging, it's hard to turn that down. We're still in that situation where it's once in a while, we've got a weekend, oh my, we have a lot of openings. We seem to be filling them, but it's, we don't have any extras.
Okay, okay.
So with this increase in our contract, are we gonna have paramedics go a little more often, AEMTs go a little more often? Are you looking at hiring more AEMTs and paramedics?
All that'll come. If you send some to us, we'll hire them.
Well, I mean, you know, we're paying a higher premium. But is, we want to make sure that what we're getting is that higher premium. You know, we're paying more money so that you can pay increased wages for your paramedics and your AEMTs and your EMTs.
Right.
You know, hopefully this will help you fill those slots that you have and keep moving forward.
That's our goal.
To be quite honest, this was a really tough pill to swallow. This was a, we expected an increase, we didn't expect an increase this large. And it was, it was through all the towns and we understand that. It was just, no warning, here's your contract, this is what it is.
You didn't get, didn't you get a letter in December telling you to prepare?
Yeah, that was, that was it, and it said, this is your new contract.
Right.
So we, it's gone up every year and that's, that's the nature of the beast. This was a significant increase this year, through all the towns.
So the question is, if we stay at a starting rate of 21 for a medic and if we don't get them, do we go up again?
Right.
We need, honestly, a little feedback.
Which I get, I get...
I don't know what the magic would be other than saying one, so.
But I don't even know, it is, I guess my question is, and this is more from a different viewpoint within healthcare, you know, what are you guys doing from a business model perspective to try to increase the appeal to come? Because like Callex, they give 3,000 runs because they're doing stuff to DHMC or from, from one place to another place. Like, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ambulance services that are doing solely transport. Is that something you're looking at building out in your model that can help offset some of the costs for what we're looking for, which is more of, you know, what our contract is for is for responsiveness for emergencies, because what we don't want to have happen is, you know, a call go out and, you know, we have to go to Berry and then Berry can't do it, then we have to go to Callex and they can't do it, and then, right, we don't, we don't want to be in a position where we've got, you know, a patient.
This winter, we did two calls to Orange, and we've never been there before. The first one came in, we're like, I think I've heard of that town, we couldn't even place it for a minute. And we did two calls to Hannover, we were called twice to Hannover.
Yeah.
So everybody's got, I don't think there's anything magical.
But I don't know that it's necessarily about money. At the end of the day, I don't, everybody says it doesn't seem to be about money. It's just about people don't want to work and do the job, nobody's interested in these things. And they want to be home and they want to only work from here to here, they don't want to work Saturday and Sunday and at night, and so you go to the shop, the supermarket, and nobody wants to work there except for older people that are like, why, where is everybody, why does nobody want to work? So, so I don't know, I, I get it. Of course, when it comes on the medical field, it's a little different because it's life and death and we need an ambulance and we need it as soon as we can for whoever. So I guess we're just, you know, reaching out and saying, okay, so we get it. What, you know, do we have anything to worry about is, you know, what, what can we do to help?
We all worry in units, I mean, I don't think there's anything specific about Rockton or any of our towns. I mean, we're, we're all in the same boat, we all have our problems finding staff. And like I said, last week I heard back, one guy that used to be an EMT with us, he went on to become an RN, went to the bridge course to become a paramedic, and decided he would come back and work a shift a week for it. But you have to work so hard to find these people, they're not coming through you. Like, they used to come and say, can we get a job, and now you're getting outdoors time.
Which we're seeing it on the news, you know, they're all talking about Essex and Williston and all these departments can't find people to work. So, and the towns, you know, maybe they're not taking it as serious, they're saying, we have a major problem. I don't have the answer either, I'm just looking out for our town and making sure that we can do what we need to do to try to help or whatever, what, anything more, Brenda, what?
Not on the budget, I'm one of their concerns.
The most extreme case, as long as we're, I'll finish on budget. Frank, I don't know if you've watched Franconia. So their fast squad used to be a transporting service and they've kind of dried up. And when they disbanded, they reached out to Littleton Fire. Fire's been, they've been providing ambulance service, but it stretches, it stresses or stretches them out. And Franconia offered them $500 per capita. I mean, they're probably gonna turn a pound. But that's how, that's what they are. And I don't know what, and they're talking regionalization, which I think they should do. But that's, that's the most extreme case, certainly not what anybody wants to do. Upper Valley, I think, is in the mid-50s right now.
Yep.
Warren Wentworth is at 109. And their basic problem, they don't, they have what they call EMTAs, but they don't have any paramedics. So it's, it's all over the place and everybody's suffering.
Right, okay.
Can I just follow up on the regionalization, please? Cause you, you mentioned that. I want to make sure that you're aware that regionalization is not a silver bullet. You may hear that from people over time, but really what you run into, and you know this, I'm not telling you anything you don't know more for, for these guys. If you regionalize with three services that are short people, you now have one service that's short three times as many people. Right, it doesn't magically make more people to fill that service. So when you think about regionalization, if that conversation comes up, please keep that in mind, that with staffing issues, it doesn't solve that completely. I just, I want that, you guys to be aware of that.
Yeah, thank you.
I think the other issue I had was, we had a director issue. That completely blindsided us. Like, all of a sudden, I had a student come to me and say, hey, Louisville lost their medical director. They have no medical director.
So we were, we were council meeting at Conish Hospital and they told us that at that meeting. It was two weeks before the end of the month.
We heard nothing, I had to, I had to ask.
Up until then, we had neither.
I had to ask directly, that could have seriously impacted, I mean, everybody, not just Rockton.
So I think it might have been a little exaggerated. I don't really want to get into the personalities of the EV, but our medical director, his wife also works in the EV. It's very stressful that we can't do all the transfers now. So that's created a certain amount of unhappiness. And when your wife is unhappy, maybe you are, I won't extrapolate too much. But he decided to give up the job, that's his way out of it, which he admitted to. So they, they, it's the hospital's responsibility to provide one. It's not, it's not, Louisville ambulance issue, that's a Conish hospital issue. And they have provided one, it just took them a little bit of time, they talked it into staying on until they got, and it took what, two or three weeks, something like that.
But had the hospital said, we can't find anybody to fill this, we all decided we're bent without...
In New Hampshire, was, I reached out to them and they said they'll, they'll come up with something to get us by, so.
And so I think the point is not that you didn't do all that, that's not the point. The point is that we heard about it from a student in a class and we never heard anything until we reached out. And so the concern for us is, we hear about that with a student in class, we have no idea we're working on mitigation. We have no idea what's going on other than, holy shit, they lost a medical director, what the hell does that mean for us? And it, like, it creates a panic.
And so, we reached out a bunch of times, like, tried to reach, really, that we were...
Yes, but what I'm, I guess my thing is, is that I, for my own sake, would have appreciated some kind of a communication that said, hey, we've run into this issue, we're doing everything we can to resolve it, just so you know. Because rumors spread like wildfire in our industry.
Yeah.
It's, you talk.
So, I guess the simple solution to this problem is, is that maybe a little bit more transparency and, and work, you know, just give somebody a heads up and say, hey, we're having trouble right now, but we're gonna resolve it, nothing to worry about, right? Okay, so...
Those are my two issues.
I would just like to say, just, you know, we, the ambulance service does serve eight towns, as we all know, it's a co-op, and there's a scheduled crew.
Okay.
There's a scheduled crew, but it could, it could be in any one of those eight towns at any moment. And, and many times, there's two or three ambulances though.
No, I agree, and I'm not here to beat you, beat anybody up, I'm just...
I mean, tomorrow, that, that situation could occur, or tonight.
Right.
So I just need to...
That's to be expected, our concern was not having a single ambulance available because we didn't have a medical director or everybody decided, we're not working today. What do we have you?
I think, you know, the concern too is, is, you know, with not having what is required or necessary for you to be able to run the ambulance service and that, that, you know, even if there's a lapse, a lapse when that service is available, like, if, if there's nobody, right, then we'll, then we have to scramble to other places to find it.
Oh yeah.
And I get, you know, I definitely get, but it's more of a, you know, without, it seemed like, it felt like with the communication that we received, at least that we got, was that there was a potential that Louisville ambulance would be shutting their doors until they had the state requirements to run their business, you know, run the ambulance service, which again is one of those, you know, nobody wants to be on the end of that call and you call and there's nobody there to answer or, you know what I mean? That, I think that's what, so I think you guys being here, I want to just say, I appreciate you guys being here to communicate that transparently and I think you've done, you know, you've reassured us and I think the big takeaway for us is, and especially, I think more than any for Brenda or whoever the head of our fast squad is, is if there's a potential for any of these issues, definitely reach out, let us know. Because I don't think, I think Brenda would be willing to help and Derek probably too, to help find a contingency plan if there's an issue that we need to help with.
We, they're already outstretched.
Yeah.
We haven't been writing contingency plan on who does what after, you know, if we were unable for a period of time.
I got you. Well, the other thing is more of just, just keeping everybody in the loop so that there isn't interruption in service or a lapse in service, you know, so.
And at the end of the day, it comes down to all the same thing, it's patience and making sure everybody gets what they need and taken care of and so on and so forth when that occurs. So, I think that's...
Get that as all of these ideas to cover.
Okay, good, I wouldn't say anything.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time and being here and helping us.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, next on the agenda, Christmas tree in Village, Mary Grant.
Well, I did my research on this.
Okay.
Back in February 2019, the board did pass by motion, shall we be all obstruction placed in the triangle? With a flag tree, you can look three or two paths through the road, in compliance with section 316. Instruction of vision of the town...
Thanks, guys.
So it's already in the minutes, and decided that it couldn't be placed there. And that was according to towns owned by laws and according to state requirements. Right? So I did my homework to find out why, and that, of course, hasn't been very well distributed through the town, why that select board passed that. It has nothing to do with what individual people not wanting the tree there, blah, 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 blah. It all has to do with what the statute required and what the town zoning by laws require. So with that said, there's still a group of people, we all see the tree there for over 50 years. It's been a precedent, it's always been there on the common, and we loved it. But we did go to an extreme one year, there was a tree that was so big it was...
I don't know who any of that...
Massive, and you could not see through it.
Yeah.
There are, the laws change, the rules change, and you can request waivers, variances, whatever. So my opinion is, if you have, you know, you'd have to know the size, it would be, it could only be a certain size, it could only be placed in a certain place, and you'd have to ask the state and grant a waiver to place it there for a certain period of time and set up who would be setting up and who would be dead. And it could be a two-week period, it could be...
Correct.
A month. Those are the things that a lot of people would like to see happen, if they'd like to do that. Also, there's alternatives. I'm saying, you know, why are we not putting it on, going to the church and putting it on the church lawn?
Well, they do do one anyways, the church does one.
Not outside, not a big, not a central one on the church, Methodist church.
Well, they did, they were doing something out there.
On the porch, they've got a wall up.
The porch, you have to see, you have to see which...
What about the park, nothing in the park?
Well, what people talk about is riding the town in the season. The park sits back on the side. So that was, you know, this is a concern, there's several people in town that want the tree back, just to say it plainly. And can you do it? I don't know, would the insurance allow you to do it? Would you get a waiver to do it? I mean, it's, it's already passed that you can't do it.
Right.
So you wouldn't have to address it. I mean, you could address it by saying, you know, if this is already here and this is why I agree with your forces. Or you could address it by saying, you would like to have a waiver against us to do this for two weeks and the month of December, but the tree can only be X height, right, just not end up into the wires.
And who's gonna do the, who would deal with the tree? Who would be, the community club?
Well, the community club would deal with it, and the people that would bother here should do it. But it would have to be set up in your requirements because...
I guess, personally, I'd want to see a lot more people that, that, you know, like, you're here and you're saying, there's a whole bunch of people that want to do this. I guess I'd like to see a whole lot of people or something that really is...
Well, you get petition, if you petition, you know.
Yeah, I mean, cause other than...
See how much want it really is.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Is it people, or is it a whole bunch of people that really...
The only issue I see with the petition is, is a petition would become a special town meeting and then the whole town's going, and, and it's fine, that's the direction we want to go. Personally, I feel like, you know, I definitely understand that spot is sentimental to folks and I understand, but at the same time, you know, part of the reason why those zoning and the state law, the state right-of-way laws and all those things are in place is to, to, from a safety perspective, prevent an accident from happening there. Because if we decide to put the tree up there and there's a, you know, an accident with a fatality, which, because somebody didn't see a car pull, a car pulling out and didn't see somebody coming through town, that's ultimately take, and then it's beyond insurance, it's lawsuits and now questioning why something that was done for safety reasons is now being looked at from a sentimental value perspective. And, and I mean, again, that's why those laws and things are in place. So personally, I think that having a town holiday tree or Christmas tree, whatever you would like to call it, is not a bad thing, but I think we need to look at alternative locations for it. And, you know, I get it, you drive into town and it's right there, but, you know, again, it's, it's, uh, you know, from a safety perspective, that's, that's how I look at it is, because we can say height and width and, but we know that somebody's gonna exaggerate that at some point.
Well, it can't be, it can't be, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be able to. I mean, if you had a six-foot tree there and you could see perfectly fine around and it's lit up, that's one thing.
No, I know, but I mean, what I'm saying is, is you like...
And the work that was put in this to, to fight it, to not have a tree there because of visibility and so on and so forth, it went through this huge thing and to undo that is a huge thing, you know, to change that. So it's easier to say unless there, somehow, somebody can prove to the select board, you know, that it's worth working on this to do something different, you know?
Well, and I think, like, like you suggested, you know, maybe you work with the Methodist church and there's a spot in front of the church that makes sense. Or, and we did, we've done some work the last few years to clean up the park and make the park look better. You know, maybe what we do is plant a tree there that's there perennially, that we decorate in, in, you know, during the holiday season, you know what I mean? Because then, we just, we, I think, then we can create a new tradition around that that isn't us continually coming back to the same thing that, that, you know, create, can create some issues.
This is what continues, this is what continues, and trying to be old people again. There's younger people that are going to be around and it's going to be unfounded.
I guess, Mary, I'd like to see, I need to see some more, some more legwork on this and like a proposal and so on, and how many people are really, really want to see the tree back there? Cause I used to be all involved in the tree until it all fell apart and whatever, we had a big thing and... So, but, um, I'm not saying that it can't happen, I'm just saying, we need to see, we need more, I don't know how...
And I would say, I mean, if this is something that the community club wants to work on, I would say include, you know, I don't know, include the zoning administrator, include the tree warden, it's a tree issue, right? Like, include those officials in the town that could be a part of that conversation to collaborate around what, what needs to be done. Because I think, you know, what we end up doing then is it becomes a tug-of-war between, you know, this tree was here, this tree's always been here and that's where we want it to...
But we have a bike over there now. We have several different things there now compared to what we had in the past.
It's true.
We had an open common, common was bigger because now the roads were all wider. There's a whole different, but, you know, and there used to be, you know, a few years ago, a hotel across the street. So...
True, what times are changing too.
And we also had, you know, Dick Peters who said, I owe it, we ain't put a tree there for a few years. I mean, the tree has always had its, obviously, that. But as you said, starting a new tradition, maybe that's what we need.
Okay.
Maybe we look at it and we say, well, hold him the law, this was here, it's already been passed. This select board can override a prior select board, but I wouldn't personally.
Well, and that's why they...
But we could say, we want to look at a new tradition.
Okay.
That's what the...
That seems fair.
Is that we need to uphold what the law says, or the zoning by law says. If anybody wants to go and change those, so be it. Twenty years from now, we'll probably have a lot of progressives and they'll change them all, they'll throw them all out. But right now, this is what you have for statutes. But let's figure out what we're going to do to make sure that we do have a tree, that we can see.
Well, and again, I mean, I think, I appreciate that the community club, and it sounds like, you know, Mary, I know you're, this is kind of your thing, but it sounds like you're representing the community club with this a little bit, but we have a lot of great entities in the town of Rockton that would love to jump in and help on that. The rec committee would love to help with that, I'm sure, right? The library is, you know, and the events that they usually, you know, you know...
Well, we're doing, well, look what we're doing in Christmas time. We're sitting down near the middle of the town, blocking the street when the big Christmas trick all lit up. So, so are we doing anything else different, we're structuring railways. So, I mean, if I took the others, flip side, which I could take, which is...
Come up, so come up with a proposal.
Which is negative, but I mean, we do certain things on certain days. Maybe we put the tree out for the night and we light it, and we take it back down the next day.
So come up with some proposals.
You know, can we do this? Can we look at the rec committee and say, the library, and as you said, all of them, and say, okay, we're having our holiday, then it's posted somewhere. So people know the streets are being used. Okay, why didn't you do the walk this last year? And I was thinking, whoop, we need to make sure that it's in the paper, you know, we close the road through foliage. You put notices up outside of town to make sure people know something's going on there. That's saving on your liability, so...
So come up with proposals.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll talk about them and see if we can come to an agreement and do something. How's that?
Okay.
I have one more thing, Mary.
Yeah.
So, the community club was sent bills for the usage of the community building for Fall Foliage Day, Chicken Pie Supper and so on. And we have never heard anything back or never, and never gotten anything, and that's understandable. But what we need, everybody, we have a policy about the community buildings.
Last year, there was a donation paid in, and I'm sure this year there's gonna be another one. And until someone changes his mind, we won't want to stick it out of the...
Okay, so, and...
So either that or a letter to the board.
Well, yeah, what I would say is, is, Mary, this is something to take back to the rest of the community club. I had a phone call with Peter, Peter, before Fall Foliage Day and discussed this topic with him. And I told him, the select board is amicable. If we receive a request for a waiver as per the policy states for use of the building for the community club's Chicken Pie Supper, we would acquiesce that request. I have got no correspondence from the community club. So, I mean, and again, and not...
Originally, because the rest of us are like, we agreed to this, you know, the town set this up and we went so little bit.
Well, it's, and it's fine, we just, and again, we, we wanted to make sure, because it was an issue in prior years, it came up, that that was, and I explicitly told that to Peter. So I want you to know that I told that to Peter, because that's what, that's all we're really looking for.
Right.
Is just a request from the community club to waive that fee.
So that everybody follows the same thing, the same policy.
We were accused of, two and a half years ago, by Peter in the select board meeting, was that, was that we were not being fair in how that was administered when we have been now moving forward.
Which we actually have a letter, right?
And you have a letter from others, right?
We have one right now.
I have one, I know, you have one.
Yeah, and that's good, because there's certain things that need to happen.
Correct. Well, and again, we document, right? I think that goes to...
Well, we've got the community club, we're in the...
And we appreciate... And we appreciate all the work.
Where it's supposed to.
But again, it's. We appreciate all that the community club does and is and everything, but we still are trying to follow all the rules and our policies and procedures for the building and everything, so nobody is.
Nobody's doing anything any different.
Right.
That's right. And if there's damage, there's issues or otherwise, we can have them somewhere to go to address it if need be, or whatever it may be, right? But again, we just wanna make sure that we have documented, our documentation specifically about.
Do, do we need to write a letter request yearly or just one?
Um.
Well.
I would, I would suggest one for a waiver, but when the date of the chick, we should get correspondence for the scheduled date of it. I mean, I think, the other thing, Mary, that, I don't know if you, um, saw in some of the, when we did appointments last month, we're trying to pull together a Fall Foliage Committee of sorts to help coordinate the events around fall foliage.
Yeah.
Because we really haven't had any money in a couple of years and it's really been kinda thrown together. So trying to make sure that it's at least coordinated and, and covered, you know, it kinda organically does a lot of things by itself. But at least we now, you know, cuz last year.
Well, because a lot of us are gonna be gone.
Yeah.
Well, you do this and Mary Puffer does this and whatever, but when we need, some thing's gonna have to replace.
Because now the town has the insurance and carries it, which is a lot of good.
Well, and again, it's.
So on top of that, also, they are now doing the parade. And hardly anybody showed up for the parade last year.
Who's doing?
So we.
Well, we had a good show for the parade last year.
Wait a second.
The problem is last year, we didn't know, we had nobody really coordinating the parade.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean. So that's why we need to, to really.
We're thinking the town gets a permit for the parade.
Oh, the town gets a permit, but we don't, nobody from the town lines up the parade or.
No, but that's, that's part of the reason why.
Which why we want somebody to coordinate and direct, be in charge of fall foliage.
The fall foliage signs that get put up, I know Peter does that stuff. We handed off the signs for, for the parade, marking it off to, to the highway, you know, that department to make sure that that's done. But again, it's, there's a lot of pieces that happen that are part of fall foliage. And what was communicated to us last year is, this is what the community club does, this is what the town does, this is what this person. And it wasn't really anything cohesive from a coordination perspective, so. And I don't even think.
Well, it's wrong, it's wrong, much bigger.
And I don't even think we have to get into a big discussion about it. We, I think it's something good for the community club to talk about and, and another thing to work on and.
And so, um, what you need is, you know, someone from the, from the racket, from each of those places to be on this community and then meet with the community club and then set it up for the day. And that way you know what's going on for the day, this is the fall foliage day.
Right.
Because five parlor used to have auctions and they used to have all kinds of stuff going on.
There could be a lot more things done with fall foliage if people get together.
We think, we, we are, so. And again, like you said, we're, we're doing a lot of, of great stuff as part of fall foliage. It's just, I think, having it coordinated and cohesive and organized will help as, as, you know.
Cuz the board isn't gonna be in charge of fall foliage.
Oh, no, no. No, no, no.
Or responsible for fall foliage.
No, no.
But that's.
It should be a committee of, um, different groups within the town and they all meet together.
So sorry to dump all that on you tonight.
No, it's okay, see, I'm no longer gonna be coordinating with fall foliage. I have my role off in the city. So she is gonna have her first year, so I know it's gonna be a hard year because.
And who, who did you hand that off to?
Nancy Hamlin.
Hamlin.
Okay.
And, um, so I'll be helping her to get through her first year of that, but there's all the little details and the devil's always in the detail, you know?
Absolutely.
And so if we have a committee, then everyone knows what everyone's responsible for and who's doing what. And hence the outline of the activities of the day. And then this is the community club, this is rec, this is library, this is historical society, this is.
Yeah, that's.
This is, we're not in school, they do a lot.
Which we don't, we don't have to get into all this, we have.
Yeah, basically, basically, it's, that's what it comes down to is we need, we, we need to be able to pull those groups in to coordinate the event and not just kinda have it thrown together. Cuz it's, not that it's bad, but it, you know, it takes some organizing and we need to have, you know.
Well, but we brought, and the town is growing and the activities are growing, which is wonderful. I just love it when people say nothing to do in Grattan, I go, what, what, what? Go to the library, go to the historical society, go to the rec committee, go, uh, trail rides, go, you know, you know, there's just so much to do here now. That's wonderful.
Absolutely.
I love it.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks.
Caladonia County Natural Resource Conservation District, Emily. Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, so you have, um, we're gonna talk about the culvert on Little Italy.
Yes.
Culverts, culvert.
There are two culverts on Little Italy, yep. Uh, so I'm Emily Cunningham, I'm the district manager for Caladonia County Natural Resources Conservation District. And we're based in St. John's Bay and we cover all of Caladonia County. And basically, work with towns, part of our work, we do a lot of different things, but part of our work is to work with towns to replace culverts that, this particular one was identified as a barrier to fish passage, so for droughts that may come stream from the wells. But most culverts are also flood hazards or, and change the way the stream moves. Which this culvert sort of like checks all those boxes. It's the, the concrete double one, I don't know if y'all are familiar with the particular site, but.
No, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, there's like a, a double concrete one that's under the CBT and then a, a big metal one and a smaller metal one next to it, um, under Little Italy Road. And the concrete one is a barrier to fish passage. And both of them kinda like mess with the stream in a way where you can see there's a big pool in the middle. And, um, the way the stream moves through it changes because the culvert is too small for, for the width of the stream. And that's true like all over Vermont.
Which you're talking about, the one on Little Italy is too small. You're not, so that's the one you, we would change out?
So, so the proposal, yeah, so it was identified as a barrier to fish passage. It was also sort of like, if we're gonna replace the fish passage barrier, we'd be only fixing the fish passage. We wouldn't actually be fixing the whole situation with both culverts cuz it's both culverts that cause.
Putting a new culvert in, where's that?
That's a different one, that's out, that's out Powerspring Road, that's the big culvert.
There is one on Powerspring Road too. This one is all again, like five, where the road ends basically and goes to the gravel pit.
Well, yeah, it's on that corner where it's really narrow and, right, right there, that's where you go over the big culvert?
Um, it gets pretty narrow, yeah, and it goes over the CBT.
Yeah.
You're looking at me and I got nothing to say about it.
Why, why are you saying anything? I was just looking at you.
Well, I already said something about it, so it opens up what you got.
So, okay, so.
So, yeah, so this, this, we, I work with someone from U.S. Fish and Wildlife and she applied for some federal funds to look, to do a conceptual like feasibility, here are the options at this location. From a natural resource perspective, it would only, it would make the most sense to combine the crossing because there are two culverts very close to each other.
Okay.
So just, it just doesn't make sense that they're both there to cross the same stream. Purely from a natural resource perspective. I understand from like a recreation road perspective, it's complicated to combine those crossings, right? So this money would sort of get us to a point where we could hire a, uh, engineer to try, try to like tell us what our options are and how much each of them would cost, basically, and what it would involve. To combine them, to only fix one of them, to fix both of them, and leave them both, whatever it might be. The money is federal funded and it would come through an agreement that we already have through Caladonia. It would cost, not cost the town anything.
Okay.
Um, and what, what I would want from the town, and we do this with other natural resource projects and culverts, is to have like one person from the town who's sort of like my contact, cuz I would be like the project manager of sorts.
Okay.
To be a voice for what the town wants in this process and, and what the concerns are for the town. For example, in Stanford, we had one person in the select board who attended all meetings and like told us the, the town's priorities, right, in replacing this culvert. Which were that the road would stay narrow and stay gravel, you know, whatever it might be from a town perspective. And that's about two meetings, you know, two or three meetings on site, just to sort of be involved in the, in the process. It's about seventy thousand dollars, just, it's, it would probably get us.
Is that just for the planning?
Mm-hmm, it probably gets us through the planning, to a hundred percent. So what we do is we expend like quite thirty thousand dollars of it to just get an idea of like what is possible. And then the town could be like, we don't like any of these, see you later. And we'd be like, all right, sweetie, see you later. We'd stop there and you.
Jesus, this is expensive stuff to do for stuff like this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so that would be like the initial and then, you know, there's always points along the way where the town can back out. It's not, you're not committing that, you're committing to starting a process, basically, is what I, what I would ask for the town is committing to starting a process and to having a person who I can talk to about it. So it could be someone from the planning commission, could be a select board person, doesn't matter to me, as long as you think that's fine. And so, so that's the one thing. And then I guess, if it gets all the way through to design and, and it actually happens, like the, the culverts are replaced, there's lots of different scenarios how that could happen. The, the one that I'm doing now is in Stanford, the town will not pay anything for that.
So how long of a process is this?
Years, couple of years. So the designing would be like a year and then, I mean, happens fastest two, three.
So, I mean, I, I, I think it's a good idea. I think the point of contact should probably be Harold Hatch, the, the highway commissioner would be the person I would, cuz he would know. He can also, like, I don't know how old those culverts are, he could maybe be able to say when they're, you know, if they're near replacement or whatever too, cuz he, he would have record of when they were put in potentially, but that, that may be.
I'm all in favor of starting the process and seeing what happens and where it goes and maybe, and whatever, why not?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm for it too. I think the big, big thing there is, is we can actually, you know, if you're with a metal culvert, I may be wrong, but with a metal culvert, that's gonna deteriorate over time anyway. It's gonna have to be replaced. So if we're doing this as a design to, you know, fix something else, natural resources wise especially, then why not, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's often like, most of those types of culverts will end up being a problem eventually. It's like when a town wants to address it essentially. And so my like best case scenario is like a town that's like, yeah, sure, I wanna replace that anyway from, from a physical infrastructure point of view. And I can sort of like bring these other natural resource funding sources to help the town to replace stuff.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll take money to help replace stuff.
That's kind of what I mean, yeah.
We can do it without spending taxpayer money, why not, you know?
Right, so I'd say let's start the process and see how it goes.
Okay.
Yep.
And Harold should be.
I think Harold should be the contact cuz it involves a town road, it's a culvert.
Yeah.
And that's right up his alley.
And if there's any other people, you know, then one of, one of us on the board can.
Yeah, cuz at some point, if it gets to implementation, it's possible, depending on the way the funding sources shake out, the town may end up holding contracts or grants that are involved.
That's fine.
But, at some point, but, at this point, it's not really anything.
Okay, do we need to sign anything? Do we need to?
Didn't bring anything signed, just wanted to meet you in person and let you know the process. Yeah, yeah.
So next week we'll get a culvert, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so highway. We have, uh, open cori bits.
You got any bids?
Uh, yeah, there's two bids to open.
What you gonna open, no.
You want, um, and I also have another thing from, and, uh, Harold stopped by and they're done hauling sand.
Yep.
But he was a little nervous that, um, they don't have quite enough sand, so they might take some money from their gravel budget and purchase a little more sand to make sure that they have enough sand.
What if they need more gravel?
Well, he didn't.
Then we borrow that from another bunch of ones?
I don't know, I'm just saying. And then I have a picture, I remember this curb cut that he talked to Bruce about and everything, so.
We got.
Go ahead.
Um, first one's from Gorman Group LLC. Uh, contact person, Rick Larson. Uh, this is for, uh, a dollar fifteen a gallon. Delivered. He did not make a bid on applied. And that's his bid. Uh, how many ga, do you know how many gallons we usually use?
I don't know. Phil, do you know?
Who did we, who did we do last year? Anyway, um, I'll read the other one. Allstate Construction Incorporated is Alan Chacon. Provided the quote, it's for a dollar eighteen a gallon. So, yeah.
Okay, so Gorman Group has it, cuz Harold said they bounce back and forth between the two, so it just, it doesn't matter.
I was gonna say Gorman's less anyway, so.
It's what, dollar fifteen versus?
Dollar fifteen versus a dollar eighteen, so save three cents a gallon.
Yeah, well, save what we can save.
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's it.
I'll, I'll move to accept the bid from Gorman Group for a dollar fifteen a gallon for liquid calcium chloride.
Okay, I agree. I second it, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, good.
Okay. There we go.
And then we have a curb cut for Bruce Lindis.
Lindes.
Lindes, uh, which is on, uh, Branch Brook Road, which there was a problem. He wants to upgrade logging road access, which I don't know, there's really a logging road, but put some three-inch stone and stuff. And Harold met with him because it wasn't gonna work, it was too steep. So they came to an agreement to go in and around and so he has this for us to sign that he's approved and.
Okay.
And you can look at it. But I was happy to hear that they talked about it and came to an agreement cuz Harold was like, you can't do, it can't happen the way, so, so that was good. So it's good for the town and good for him for the, they gotta do a little ditch work anyways, he said, so it's all gonna work out great, so.
That's, that's one big match they call that.
Yeah. So that's all I had from, um, that's all I had from Harold.
So at this point, is that just the logging or are they gonna help?
No, there's a camp up in there, I think, it's just for access to make the road better, to drive us.
I think so cars can.
It just, all it says is upgrade logging access.
Vehicles get in there a little easier.
Yeah, cuz there's really no log. Yeah, so.
They're full of, sorry.
Well, all it says is up, upgrade logging road access.
But Harold said it wasn't really a logging road, he just cut some twigs and kinda made a path through there, so.
So what's the name of the permit?
Bruce Lindes. Bruce Lindes.
We can show, we can give it to you.
We can give it to you. Yeah, you can look it over, you gotta sign it though.
So, and, uh, I got an email, did you see the email on parks they needed for? They just, they, we, we'll sign a thing, there was a thing, there was an email about, uh.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. See all that was.
Just make sure I, I gotta record that, so make sure I get it.
Okay, yeah.
Um, treasurer.
Okay, um, so last week, uh, last meeting, I handed out the budgets, so didn't know if there was anything that you wanted to review.
Was there any red flags?
You know, not that I can see.
Okay.
It all looks, um, within, but.
Nope.
So I don't know, I, um, thank you. I.
There's a, I mean, there's a few things on there that.
Thank you.
Are over budget already.
It's due to have.
To be expected.
Yeah.
Yeah, like state, state, under highway insurance, state P and R permit fee.
Yeah.
Are those, I didn't get one.
Get what?
This is last budget.
Budget, I didn't hand them out last week.
Oh, I have it, last, last week?
Last meeting, sorry.
Oh, I have it.
The fifth of April, that meeting.
Mark.
You thought it was May.
Oh, I was looking at, I was looking at the minutes, what we discussed in March fifteenth and I'm like, having a brain, brain. Eight percent, no.
Twenty-five percent.
Okay, folks, right here. So I didn't review that cuz we, I always forget to review that.
Well, I think the one thing.
I depend on our different committees to let us know if there's anything that's.
Yeah, the, the one thing I'll note, under highway material, or highway operating expenses is there, for diesel, we're at fifty-two percent of budget. Gas for forty-seven percent of budget. That's paid ten.
Which we kinda suspected that was gonna be.
Yeah.
Be the, um.
Well, with gas prices where they are, I mean, it's just means.
Well, they're supposed to be a lot more, so.
I would think they're using more gas in the winter for plowing than in the summer, kinda, sorta. I mean, anyway.
Okay, nope, looks, looks good.
So, um, I attended, um, the open meeting law today, I don't know if you guys. Okay, so I attended the open meeting law today. I don't know if you guys, I didn't sign yet, so I printed, it's in the folder of the handout that, of the webinar.
Okay, yep, I saw.
You know, it was as good as it can be, yeah.
Okay.
So if you can look at the printout, I didn't make three, I just- Also, there's, I need to figure out when Dan goes out on an animal control visit, call. We need to figure out a wage for him, because he went, called out on Sunday for two hours or whatever, and-
Not really health officer.
It's not health officer, it's not zoning.
No.
So we do need to, I need to, we need to pay him for going out, and Mark was not available. He was out of town. So Mark would have been the one that took care of it, but Mark was not available, so Dan-
I think we're gonna need to discuss Mark's wages and maybe try to do something different with hourly stuff. And then we would have a line item that Mark got paid to do dog stuff and constable stuff, and Dan got paid to do, you know what I mean?
As opposed to a monthly stipend.
Yeah, you know what I mean? So we gotta try to, I guess we need to discuss that at some point, but yeah, figure out how, how we would do with that.
Okay, well, keep it, you know, he'll probably submit a timesheet, standard months, so.
Yeah, what's his, what's his hourly rate for zoning? What's Dan's hourly rate?
Well, he gets per permit, he gets so much.
Then he gets consulting, I think.
He has a consulting figure, I don't know.
But it's not by the hour, isn't it?
Yeah, that's what it is. Consulting is by the hour. Because he, with all these building permits over the last couple of years, he was doing a lot of consulting.
Going out to the lake and checking peoples.
It was just a lot. So he thought he does get an hourly rate for that. I don't know off the top of my head, but.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I guess we'll do some discussion on that, we'll figure out some.
We should figure out what it makes, what makes sense to be, to be an hourly rate. And I mean, if, if Dan's gonna be continuing to help with dog complaints, and it doesn't fall within health officer, doesn't fall within zoning, then we need to, you know, we should probably appoint him as like the assistant constable or something, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Or under animal control, we have a little budget add a line.
I'll do some research on, just kind of figure out what. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the rate is, but come up with something.
So maybe at the next meeting, maybe?
Yeah.
Well, I was hoping Aaron was going to be here, but the ARPA reporting was due the end of April about our projects. And Aaron was appointed, one of the contacts, and he asked to be removed.
Yep.
And Zach was going to be on. So I tried to remove Aaron, but I couldn't, but I was able to add Zach.
All right.
So I think Aaron has, might have to do something to remove himself. I'm not a hundred percent sure. It was a little tricky.
Do we even, does it even matter if Aaron gets removed and Zach is on there?
It doesn't matter for now. We're on it and-
I wouldn't worry too much about it.
Did you see Zach's name on it, though?
I added it.
Then we didn't see it pop up?
I don't know. We were in it today.
We need to get in there. So I need to get in there.
So we reported what we, started the projects, the two projects, you know, we have drainage and we have broadband. So we created them and-
Yeah, so that's good. That was a-
That's what needed to be done by the thirtieth.
So we're, we're set. Is there any action I need to take?
I don't think.
At some point, I think you'll have to come in and we'll do it together and-
Set you up.
Set you up, because I think that's how we did Aaron.
Yeah, check your, got an email, because I put your email in.
Okay.
And I thought I added you, but then Carrie went in and, you know, we didn't see. So we don't know, but.
I'll, I'll blow the check.
And I have the town policies.
Yeah, oh, we need to, yeah, okay.
So I don't know if I bump that down to get through all the other people.
Yeah, let's get through all this stuff. We'll do that at the end, I think.
All right, and then I have other things to talk about, but they're under different categories.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you, Lisa. Town clerk.
I have the letter from the Jazzy Fund asking for the waiver of the community building. They're doing their event Saturday and Sunday. So, I mean, I sent it to you guys, but I printed a copy.
Yeah, I saw the letter, so I don't know what we need to do to-
I think, I think what we should do is just vote to approve the waiver. That's what we want to do.
Yeah.
Their dates are wrong, though.
Why was she off?
It's the twenty-second and the twenty-third.
It is, it's this weekend.
Yeah, they have it, the twenty-first and the twenty-second.
Yeah. Well, she is coming in Friday night to set up.
I mean, we can still approve, it's fine. It says Saturday, April twenty-first and Sunday, April twenty-second, so.
That's fine.
But I know that-
You've got a pen, you mean?
Yeah, sorry. We can, I'll fix it on here. How about that? Does that sound all right?
Yeah.
So I, I agree, I just think that's fine, and we accept their, their letter as payment for using the, to the town hall for this weekend.
So I have a question on waiver. Doesn't just pretend the Jazzy depends on anybody who passes away. Do they still have to provide insurance for themselves while they're here? Or are we waiving the insurance also in towns for the insurance?
I would say, they would, they would have, well, they would have to have their own insurance coverage.
Yeah, but wait, wait a second.
Provide, or, or, I know with a couple of rec things that have happened in the past.
It's done with the rec.
There should be, well, I know, but there should be a waiver, prob, or not a waiver, but a, well, yeah, like a, you know, you know, I'm not gonna sue the town fire myself at my event.
No, you all will rent it for a birthday party and stuff like that, no insurance.
Yeah, they don't, but.
But Jazzy's has insurance, because they've done the Halloween part.
Well, I know, but it just gets a little interesting, so if you're requiring insurance, a lot of people usually don't have insurance, and why would they?
I would say if they don't have their own insurance coverage, we should probably have some sort of liability waiver that we provide, that says the town is not responsible.
Well, they do. Everyone who rents it, that's part of it, they sign.
Sign the paper.
Exactly.
Whether it's some holdup in court, but it's them signing off that they can't-
Go back on the town.
Hold harmless to the town.
Yeah, basically, that's-
So your answer, your, the answer to the question is, is that, no, not everybody has insurance.
Well, my real thing is, community clubs gonna say, so it's get a waiver. They don't pay insurance or not pay insurance.
No, they have insurance.
They, they, they're still, they, yeah, they are still required. They are still required to provide insurance for their event, or as part of that whole harmless clause.
Organization. The Jazzy Fund is like an organization.
They're a nonprofit, so.
Nonprofit, just like the community club is like an organization thing, right? Nonprofit.
Do we want to vote for this? Or do we, do we need to vote to approve this? Or do we just say we're-
We just said that, that we accept their letter for this weekend.
I'll just write on here that we approved it.
Yes.
Okay. That sounds good to me. What else?
So I just have nothing much more. The dogs are coming in, about two hundred and thirty now.
At a three hundred and something, right?
Three hundred, roughly. And, you know, the fee will increase May first again. I put that on the website. Mark brought a dog to the pound, so that was, you know.
Good, yeah, he came and saw me. Doubt it, so.
And that fellow got him registered and-
Yep.
Bravies and-
We're gonna start.
Picked him up, so.
Cracking down and following our procedure.
That'll be the way to go.
Good.
And that's really all I have.
Thanks, Carrie.
Welcome.
Assistant assessor Dorothy.
Hold on, this.
Oh, no, we're gonna have to move you to the bottom then.
So I did a webinar on Vermont High with the, and NIMR with the updates. They're doing, they're rolling out the homesteads and the current use. I did our homesteads for two weeks, I think.
Okay.
One day this week. It went all right, but I have a lot of questions, so I'm gonna do another week and then get my questions to them. But it's, it's there, it's working. I was on with the Vala meeting the end of last week, and a lot of that discussion was about the H40 bill. And Vala is wording a proposal to, a response to the committee of what they want their position to be. So the Vala position is that they're, want to have regular reappraisals, they're recommending regular reappraisals, the state not take over the reappraisals, and that a Vala person be on the committee when they, when they have this committee to decide what's gonna be happening, that a Vala person be on that committee. So at this moment, the bill is in the Senate Government Operations Committee. And so I don't, I don't think it's gonna get out of committee or out of the Senate this year, it sounds. But they, the president of Vala testified and they, she was very, much more impressed and more at ease with the Senate committee than she had been with the House of Representatives. And so at that point, the LCT, Vala, and the Tax Department all recommend, did those, those three recommendations, they all agree that that needs to be what happens.
Fair.
That they're not, the state, you know, shouldn't just take over doing reappraisals.
Well, I guess that's good news.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think too, that the other thing that is still a concern of mine is, is this, this is gonna come back up if the state doesn't hold accountable towns that aren't appraising their taxes appropriately.
And so that's one of the other big points, is that there would be regular reappraisals, you know, not just, oh, you don't do it for fourteen years, but there would be a standard. So that it would be six years or ten years or somewhere in the middle.
Okay, that's good.
So John and I are working frantically on updating property cards to get everything ready so that we can file the abstract. John's gonna come next Wednesday, and we're gonna do some of the visits to the inspections to some of the newer houses. The building is crazy as far as taking an old camp, tearing it down, moving it, rebuilding it, and then saying, oh, it's on the same footprint. But it's not on the same footprint. So there's a lot of-
Is that out like mainly out to lake, I'm assuming, or is that everywhere?
Yes, yes. And there are some huge ones that are going up that, you know, it's gonna take us wildly beginning to measure.
So what happens when people, when that happens?
Um, we don't know.
So I guess the question too is, is, I mean, they should be filing permits with the zoning commissioner.
Here they are. They're, mostly they're permits. We only had two or three that haven't been permits for. But it's, it's their interpretation and Dan's interpretation and our interpretation. So it's, I mean, John's looking at one, I've got, we've got pictures of ours. Landowners have been, property owners have been very good about sending pictures. So we've got pictures that show the outside, and John's looking at me saying like, no, that wasn't there before. That's been bumped out, and it's more of a, it's more of a porch renovation that wasn't there before. So that's what we've got to go put our eyes on and see. So we're doing, I've got it down, I'm hoping to have less than ten that we're gonna need to go visit, but those are the ten big ones. But we're, we're getting there. I did send the letter to Senator Kitchell, I mailed it and I emailed it, that one out. I want to say maybe Monday. And then the other big, the really big issue is we got a letter from, a two-page letter from Gavin Reed. There's a parcel on Anisotro, eleven point nine acres. And for many years, two different people were paying taxes on it. As far as I can tell, there are dates from nineteen fifty-nine, nineteen seventy-four, nineteen eighty-seven. At this moment, I've read the letter, John's read the letter, I'm not sure what the letter says. I think the letter says that it's in, still a court case. And so Gavin Reed, his first comment was, the purpose of this letter is to follow on my August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty email to Dorothy Knott, to let, to let us know advice if this matter was in dispute and might go to trial, might go to trial. So this is the, the type of case that it is, it's been three years since he's responded. And so it's, it's in, it's a court case. At this point, we, we're pretty sure. So at this point, we're holding to see what transpires from him. And my first comment was, oh, I'll get a hold of the town lawyer with this. But then I thought, then I saw, oh, it's Gavin Reed, so. So we're holding. And they also communicated in cartographics. I've talked with cartographics. He said, you want me to change the map? And I said, no. At this point, the eleven point nine acres has gone to one person in, um, August of twenty twenty. The eleven point nine acres was transferred to him. And this party that's with Gavin Reed is saying, no, that should be our person. So it's-
I don't even, so it's in dispute.
You're working on it.
We're working on it.
Okay, that's it.
So you said two, two parties are paying taxes on it?
Yes, they both parties, and this, this goes back to Kitty and Linda, and they had done a lot of work on it. I've got folders like this of where we've been working on it, but there's no answer. So from nineteen eighty-six to twenty twenty, at least, they both paid taxes on it.
For twenty-three years?
Yes.
So, what we're like talking about, eleven, there's no structure on it, just like-
I mean, how much of the tax?
So I guess the question is, is how much, how much is one person, how much has one person paid for twenty-three years? Because if this, so, so here's my concern. Somebody's been paying for, two people have been paying for twenty-three years, when this dispute, because it sounds like a land dispute between who owns the property, whoever loses that battle is gonna want their money back.
Probably.
We're not talking a large amount of money, because eleven, twelve acres of land with no structure is like two hundred bucks, you know what I mean?
I don't know.
I'm just saying it's-
Thirty-seven years, though. You said eighty-six?
Eighty-six to twenty twenty.
Yeah, so thirty-seven years, I, thirty, yes, whatever.
I know, I'm just saying it's not, it's not seven thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, but no, but thirty, thirty-seven times two hundred is the money that comes out of the budget.
Plus it's out of your state.
Whatever.
So I'm just, at this point, just making you aware that at some point, and I don't, I mean, it's been three years since you responded to my emails, so I don't know where it's coming.
My recommendations is that we should have, we should figure out what that total is for what that, what one of those two people, because whatever one's paying, the other one's paying, right? So we should figure out what that is, and we should make sure that that's held somewhere. Because again, when it comes down to it, somebody's gonna go, I want my money back, because I've been paying taxes.
Yeah, we have a town emergency reserve.
But that doesn't fall within the letter of that reserve fund.
I don't know.
I, I would, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time talking about this right now.
Thirty-seven, even.
This has been going on for quite a while.
Thirty-seven, thirty-four years, at two hundred dollars a year is still, what? It's a lot of money.
Less interest.
Less interest.
Were they each paying a hundred percent of the tax out, or did they split?
No, they were each paying for the eleven point nine acres. And I don't know why, you know, it was twenty-five.
On one, and then the other property was taking that little piece too.
Yes.
It wasn't like one eleven point nine acre.
So the one property-
No, but it's still, it's a little-
Included with one and then included with the other.
But, but still, I would, I mean, that value of twelve acres of land is still, you know, even undeveloped and plus taxes, you think about it, somebody's gonna want their money back. So we need to make sure that we have a plan to pay that back to them when they come knocking. You know what I mean? That's my thought.
But we have, we have money that, that we can use out of emergency budget. I mean, it's not like you're poor.
I don't know, there might be a limitation on, on this.
We owe their money back, you owe their money back.
I don't know. I don't know, I think, I think it's-
That's what I'm saying, though, what we should-
On the people paying the taxes.
And honestly, the question really is, is should we be sending them bills for that property if it's in dispute? You see what I'm saying?
Sending a bill for what?
Sending a tax bill for the property that's in dispute.
It's included, though, in two different people's taxes.
Well, one person is paying on it now, and that's what's just disputed. That's what's being disputed, is that the person that's paying on it, the other people say that it's still their land and that he never should have gotten the eleven point nine acres to start with.
Oh, we'll wait till this all shakes to- Oh, we'll wait till this all shakes down.
I, I, like I, like I said, I think the, to be proactive, it would be good to understand what that cost is. That's my personal opinion.
Okay.
Because when it comes down to it, and they ask, it's better for us to know about it and say, okay, here's the bill, or here's what yoga.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be more than, I mean, 11.9 acres today to 1986, it's gonna be a lot different.
Yep.
And it may go back further than that, cause that was as far as Kitty and Linda actually went into the old tax books, the yearly tax books, and caught, and copied property B and property M, and they do, they both pay, but I don't know that it doesn't go back further than that.
Okay.
And so at this point, we're waiting for it to come out of, maybe someday come out of court, but I just wanna let, you all know, because it's a new, it's a new, you're all new boards since the last time this came out.
Okay, thank you, Dor.
You all, that's it, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fire and fast, I'm assuming we don't have any, unless Phillip's got something on fire and fast.
We hit a little grass fire the other day, and then Forest Fire Ward went back to talk to the homeowners about that, and gave, read them the right act.
Yeah, cause it wasn't really, I thought there was a no burn thing going on.
Was that they, they kind of, they, they got read the right act.
Okay. All right, and we already discussed the stuff with Woodville, so that's good. Constable, I don't think, do we have any reports from Mark?
No, just the dog thing.
Yeah, he's been working on the dog thing.
I gave him the list of who was delinquent dog now, so he, you know, start calling them or, you know, come across those people, but, um, that's it.
Okay, good. Library? Okay.
All good.
Zoning administrator?
That's good, Dan's been in, some permits are starting back up.
Okay, yeah, he said it was busy, with stuff coming in, starting to get busy. Health officer?
Dan.
Okay.
Nothing.
Good. Oh, I got my, how did I get, I get the thing from the state, this thing?
Oh, I have a copy of it.
Can I have a name tag, and a badge and everything, and?
Yep.
How, how did I get?
Copy of your certificate, put it in your file.
This is ridiculous.
That's what I got, wait, handed to me.
Maintenance, anything for maintenance?
I have a couple things, Clearwater Filtration needs to replace a valve, and I asked for an estimate, and it's in the folder, May 18th is when they're coming.
Okay.
Chimney saver contract, that was missed last meeting, you guys need to sign, second page.
I didn't sign it, but I didn't see it.
Okay, it needs to be signed, so we can send them the deposit.
Okay.
Please sign. That's it for maintenance.
Okay.
So there's a light out here on the ramp outside that's flashing, so I don't know...
Oh, I, one of the, oh, no.
One of the outside.
I saw on the LED light.
Just ramp right out here.
The one that goes into the gym?
It's in the gym, it's been flashing for, I don't know, probably at least 40.
Okay.
And we think the light, the smoke alarm's getting fixed, because we had a request for a new one.
It's in the gym.
Up in the gym.
So did anybody talk to Mark or somebody about climbing up and putting the grids on?
I thought Carrie was gonna check in with...
Oh, okay, I'm, so maybe that person can change the light bulb.
Yep, that sounds good.
That's probably just rea, reachable at least.
Oh, is it on?
On that ramp ceiling, right under the ramp, you mean? Or shining out.
No, under the ramp, inside the ramp.
Tall, tall person with a short ladder might be able to reach that.
It's the middle one, I think.
Okay, what else? For maintenance, that it? Or is it for maintenance?
That's all right.
All right, good. Maintenance IT, nothing. Planning Commission?
Meeting next week.
Okay. Okay, NECA, CUD update?
Yes.
Okay.
So, on meeting day, I mentioned that there was the possibility of another grant program opportunity, surface language, if we were to get it really accelerated, broadband being brought to the rest of Groton. And so that program got announced, it's USBA Rural Development Community Connect, right?
Okay.
There's a 50 something, it's a program guide on it. So anyways, it's a, it's a program that was, I think, last run like two or three years ago, they just relaunched it a couple weeks ago. NECA Broadband kind of asked towns who would be potentially interested in supporting, with them being the lead, going after the grant, cause they would build the infrastructure. A handful of towns kind of put their hand up, and, including I, I put my hand up for broadband. NECA Broadband selected us, based on the demographics, and based on who's got fixed fiber list and who doesn't. We would be the one that they would apply with. And what that means to Groton is that NECA Broadband would be the lead applicant, they would, there's a 15% matching fee that NECA Broadband would pay if we get the grant. I, and who else I can rally up in town would help build the case, in terms of economic impacts, addressing educational challenges, addressing healthcare challenges, addressing our needs, addressing public safety as well. So it would be one of these things that would be quite a long shot. It would involve probably talking, and there's a select zone that's been designated and picked, I've got a map of that, that's unserved area, and also areas that are outside of the winners of the order doc, auctions a couple years back, because of people, and those vendors were giving money to serve it, so it would basically involve talking, you know, businesses that are being unserved, talking with state parks and other agencies that are unserved right now, and then helping NECA Broadband sort of build the reason why this would have a significant impact on the town of Groton if we were to receive it. The grant amount is up to $5 million on it, minimum 100K. And one of the key things, though, and probably our biggest challenge with this, given the geography, is of where, of what part of the town is served versus unserved, is they're really looking for some type of quote-unquote "community building" to have, get created with this funds, and provide high-speed broadband access. So it can't be like our library or our community building right now, per se, because they already have access to high speed. It would have to be, find a spot in the zone, and either, you know, construct a building, and up to $150,000 is, is part of this grant can be dedicated to the building, either add on to a building, or bring in some type of prefab or trailer. And the community building would provide a couple points of access, computer access, as well as high-speed service. All of this would be funded through the grant money, but it would be finding a spot for a trailer, or a place that we can open up and call our quote-unquote "community building", it could be Upper Valley. I'm gonna meet with, and talk with Bill tomorrow, and kind of run it by him. It could be, you know, the ball field, it could be the highway department, it could be Woodman's or whatever, the corner there, or anything like that. But that, that's our biggest obstacle.
What, what about the nature center out of Willbrotro, cause?
Yeah, that's in the zone, that would be talking...
We'd have to talk with the state, but it's within, and honestly, my, my thought, from a strategic standpoint is, if they're running fiber all the way out there to a community building, even though it's the state's building and we would provide internet access, there's a potential for anybody along that fiber route to get internet as well.
Well, I mean, the map is essentially the east side of the lake, so.
Yep.
Because the west side is covered under this part of, you see this, it's this area right here, this area here, there's, I don't know, CCI or somebody else won the auction for the west side of the lake, but the east side of the lake, nobody's got cover. So it would include the nature center in the zone. One of the things, too, is it needs to be one contiguous zone, and you can't have even one served address in that town, otherwise you're just gonna buy all of them.
I see, that's one of the really, yeah.
So you have to run the map, basically. So, and you can't go into where the auction, where there's auction winner, either, which kind of rolls out the west side, but the east side opens up, including the nature center, including Big Deer, Stillwater's probably out of bounds, New Discovery would be in, Catalent's actually out of bounds. Yeah, so I've, I've got a intro going into the state park people and stuff like that, just to, cause I know, I've heard that they're, they definitely have some tech issues, the fact they don't have broadband access.
All right.
So this, this is the big picture.
I would hope though, not being really open year-round.
Well, that would be a problem.
That would, yeah.
That would be a problem.
That, yeah, that would be.
So you're, you're kind of just letting us know what you're working on, and ideas?
This came out, or all this world's on, and it just...
Give the move center, that's probably, that's probably, okay.
20 are headline. I just wanna make you aware, you know, I may have asks in terms of all different things, I'm gonna probably just roll out into the community and start talking.
That sounds good, yeah.
I think that's a, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, where is a good spot to put a community center building that can be used for high-speed internet, is basically what it comes down to.
Yeah, and it needs to be open Monday through Friday, and ideally on weekends, so. I mean, it doesn't need to be seven by 24, but it's being viewed as a place where people can come and set up, do homework, a, a place where, you know, people could take education courses.
How much is the grant for?
Up to $5 million.
Up to $5 million?
Yeah.
Build a whole new library.
Up to 150.
For a building.
Go towards the community building.
Yeah, I would talk to, just talk to community members, like Stuart and Bill and stuff, and, and maybe, you know, people can come up with a good plan.
Modern wooden building.
What's that?
Modern wooden building.
Yeah.
Stuart.
Yeah.
Northeastern Longham was the little cabin.
Somebody bought it all.
Yeah, but he's a, he knows, I bet, I met the gentleman.
He lost a little bit.
Well, he doesn't, or rented out or do something with it, so that actually might...
We could lease that.
Yeah, that would actually, he might be very, he seems...
Could he be parking in his thing and just walk out?
Well, what a great, that's...
Yeah, so that might actually work into something, that was, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
He's a nice gentleman, he's from Colchester, I don't remember his name.
Mike O'Brien.
Mike O'Brien is his name?
Yeah.
That would be a good, that would be a good place.
I mean, we would definitely, we would have to lease it, probably, we'd have to come up with a surrender.
Well, this would be NECA Broadband's, so.
It wouldn't be, that's, it would be, okay.
Yeah, so that's a good, that works good, yeah, okay.
Unless we talk to Bill tomorrow, he wants it, something up there.
Yeah, I mean, I think Bill's is a, would be able to just go home, run a spot, get traffic.
Well, I know, and...
But I don't think, I don't think he'd give up his space, does he?
He's also, I mean, he, he had unrestricted internet for Wi-Fi for a long time, but I don't know, four or five years ago, he had a string of break-ins, and he, that's why, when you drive past there at night, there's all the lights, and he shuts internet down, change the Wi-Fi password and all that stuff, cause he's, he's, he was concerned then, and my conjecture is he was concerned then about, you know, unwanted visitors on, on his off business hours.
Fair enough.
So, I mean, it's been worth, worth having a conversation with him, too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll find out more tomorrow.
Okay.
That's a great idea, and I'll just come to, plan to come back at the next little step, where we need to go, plan B, cause there's not a lot of window here.
Okay, that sounds good. Perfect. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
For, grant, project?
I don't know, any people there, what do we?
Yeah, we had a meeting last week, and I think the idea, there's still like another section of the agreement that's getting finalized by state, and so we basically said, hey, let's not bug you guys, and so we got it all.
Okay, good, good. Infrastructure, project update stuff, we got some new stuff?
We have a meeting, oh, next week? Next week, 4:27 and 11:00 AM, as a project check-in, which is, I think, sounds like we're gonna be, is gonna be a regularly occurring thing, so this is just really a check-in, call, but that's really where we're at right now, I think we're still waiting on Gavin to get back to us, right, on easement stuff?
Yeah, but he wants the, the Mill Street thing to be done before he...
They're coming next week, right?
Yeah, so Mill Street, UDM, archaeology.
Yeah, Archaeological Society.
Is, is coming next Wednesday or Friday, depending on the weather, to do their digging.
Man, I'm out of town, too. They're not gonna, hopefully they don't find anything.
Right.
It would be cool if they did, don't get me wrong.
What? What is it about? No, we don't want to find anything.
Cause then we don't, then we don't mess with the project.
So that's pretty exciting that that is happening. Hopefully it's Wednesday, I don't know, just exciting. I guess that's it.
Okay, good. I guess we could do open to public and other business, and then we'll do our policies after that, how's that sound?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll kick it off, we got a letter on dated 4/10, notice of allegation violations by Agency of Natural Resources for the Groton-Rygate Transfer Center. I didn't get a chance to ask, but I'll ask, do we know if, okay, it looks like NECA Waste Management Division, the director, Paul Thom, Thom, Thomasy, was copied on this letter as well.
In Rygate.
In, and Ry, and the Rygate Select Board, no, wait.
So what are we supposed to do?
No, they didn't send it to Rygate, they, they didn't, according to this, they didn't copy the Rygate Select Board either. But...
What do we need to do about that? What's it?
Well, it's, it's a list of six violations that they found when they did a pop inspection of the...
So we need to address that?
They should probably, that would be NECA Waste Management Division, cause we pay, we, we pay annual fees for them to run that.
So do we need to reach out to them and check in and see what's...
It's happening, I guess.
Rygate, the, I mean, Gene would know, right, what's the plan, what's going on, right?
Surprised no one from Rygate, I mean, it's centered...
Should we send that, should we check in with Rygate?
Barb Schwend, Schwender, Schwendter, or something. Waste Management PD Compliance Lead, and Paul Thomasy, Director of NECA Waste Management Division. I mean, it should go to, I mean, it really should go to NECA Waste Management Division, so I'm hoping that they've addressed that, but...
Well, we need to, so I guess to follow up on that, right? Who do we need to follow up on that with, then? Should we check in with Rygate, see what they know about it?
I think we go right to Paul at NECA Waste Management Division. I mean, I don't have his email on here, but I'm sure I could find it on their website.
So he got the same letter, too?
He, it's, he was copied, that's...
Does he have the contact information or anything for Paul? No.
I can, I mean, I'd have to look it up, I could probably look it up on their website. But, I, I mean, it's concerning that, you know, we're paying for responsible waste disposal safely, et cetera, and Waste Management Division, or NECA Waste Management Division, who manages that site, isn't taking proper care of the site.
Okay.
I mean, it could just be that they did an inspection, like all that is, you get findings, and you've got so many days to fix them, and then...
I'm sure, it's just, yeah, I'm just, nothing too serious, I wouldn't think, that can be dealt with, but...
Well, let's see.
Just trying to figure out.
It looks like, there's a couple of things, not just its reporting, so, on or before January 1st of each year, the permittee shall submit a report concerning its financial condition on or before January 1st, 2020, and every two years thereafter, the, the permittee shall review the approved closure and plan and closure cost estimates. Facility is authorized to land, to manage landfill, ban... Facility is authorized to land, to manage landfill, banned electronic devices. There's something there that was not correct.
Alright, well, we'll, you wanna work on it, you want me to work on it, what do you want to do?
I don't know, you wanna call Paul, you want me to look?
Yeah, I can find, I can find out and contact, no, that's fine.
Well, I just don't want us to get a fine. That's all of that. I, I just don't want the town to get a fine because of something NEK Waste Management Division didn't do.
Okay.
I'd forward that right to them and say, that's your thing to pay.
I'll check on it, find out what's going on with that. I'll check in on Paul.
Maybe, I mean, it, it came on the tenth, so, like, that was beginning of last week, so maybe he's already got it figured out, but.
Right, but, well, we can find out pretty quickly, okay?
The only other thing I had for open is, um, I got the signup sheet for the town yard sale. So, uh, place, that's May twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh, okay.
So, um, there's a few people that have signed up.
Okay, good.
You know, hopefully we can have more people and.
Did, um, uh, anyway.
We could do it on the, last year we didn't do it on the lawn because, um, the grass is not there. So, we could play it by ear, it worked fine in the parking lot, but see, see what the turnout is, but, um, so, I'm, I'll, excited about that.
Yeah, that's great, good.
And the library just contacted me, the friends of the library, they might want to be part of it, so.
Perfect.
I thought that was encouraging.
May sixth is greenup day. I haven't received any greenup bags yet, so I haven't put anything out there.
Okay, I see people have already been, started to pick up in places there, just on their own, walking down the road and picking up stuff.
I leave my stuff until May sixth, so I pick it up on greenup day.
Okay, anything else open to the public?
Um, there was a survey from Washington Electric, I'm gonna fill it out.
I hate surveys, I don't.
It's not, it's a, it's a ballot to vote for who you want on the.
I don't care, I don't have Washington.
Phillip, you wanna fill that out?
I have three mountains out.
He's got Washington Electric.
Yeah, I didn't fill my own in.
What?
Um, alright, so what about?
Pilot.
Policy, policy.
You have policies.
Yeah.
His fraud prevention policy, so what I did, this is what we had. And it was updated in, uh, June two thousand and fifteen.
Yep.
And then VLCT sent me the current one that they, their model policy.
Yep.
And so then I updated it to have town Groton in here.
Any, anything significant you can think of that?
No.
Was updated?
You know, it looks, looks the same.
Looks about the same.
Yeah.
Looks about the same. So, I think we just. Yeah, I mean, I think it's good, good to go, but if it's not any significant change, isn't it?
No, I compared.
I agree.
I compared, none of them really are.
Alright. I would say if, you know, Mayor wants to read them and.
Oh, sure, I'll, I'll keep them clipped together and, um, so that's VL, what you're looking at there Tristan, is VLCT's.
On the fraud prevention.
Just wasn't sure how to do all this.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I think that makes sense.
No, don't sign that one Tristan, that's just VLCT's.
You don't need to sign that.
That's just the example.
You need to sign the one that's got.
Already signed, see look.
Yeah, you did.
So you're good. So that one.
Too many things here, okay.
Yeah, I have three of, on each one.
That's the original.
That's the original, that's the suggested, this is the final.
We have too many things here.
I know, I know, it is confusing.
I just wanted to.
Okay, and then investment policy, so again, this is the original. And then this is VLCT's suggested. And, um.
It looks like it's pretty well.
I think the same, it was all the same. Be there, everything looked.
Updated, this added pooling.
Yeah, here is pooling.
Well, except for approval, I love. Consolidated to maximize investment earnings, to increase efficiencies. That'd be the only thing that's really added, yeah. And I can see.
Conflicts of interest was there.
Standard of care, conflicts of interest.
Internal controls.
Internal controls, authorized investment.
Looked all the same. I think that it was all about the same, so it's just to keep current with.
Yeah, the big one is, the big ad there is just, no, I guess it's there on the original.
Yeah, it is.
It's just, yeah, okay. Alright, so I think that one's good. Right?
Yep, that's good.
I'll leave.
Make sure you sign the right one.
This one.
Well, see, you get to sign on the chairperson line on this one.
Yeah, sorry, I had, I have a program that, that switches it over to Word so I can edit it and it, lines don't work out.
That's right, so that one's that one.
Tristan has to sign.
Oh, oh yeah, he does, he's a good board. Alright.
Okay, and then, so let me clip, clip those back together.
Say this one now.
And this is capital program and budgeting policy, so it's the same thing, this is Groton, that's ours.
VLCT.
This is VLCT and this is what it current, it was.
Um, and so. We, yeah, this one's the original. Did we write that in on here, or you typed it in this type?
Yeah.
So, that's where this thirty thousand and thirty-five.
Yeah, we upped it to thirty.
Capital expenditures.
They handwrote it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's just mine, that's on here.
We just did it.
I think that one's good too. Not anything really endeavored.
No.
Except for that we increased it to thirty thousand versus twenty. And was that based on VLCT?
No, they didn't put an amount, so I just went a little higher on.
Okay.
Seeing how it's, several years later.
That's, I think that's fine. With me, that sounds good. I'll figure it out one of these times. Well, that's that, so those are the ones.
And then this is trustees of public investment policy, which is very confusing. This is what we had, and, um.
Trustees of public funds, so is this includes?
When you go to the back, it, the select board signed it, so I did it the select board, but it does talk about library and cemetery in there too.
I think it's the. I mean, this is, this is really just a policy that lays out how the library trustees or the cemetery trustees, how they're supposed to invest and spend their money.
Right.
Is what it comes down to.
Talks about local investment and standard of care.
It's basically just.
Investor.
Yep, i- it's a delegation of that.
Right.
Investment authority from the select board to trustees of public funds, so the library trustees and, yeah.
Okay, so it's this one?
Oh, look, you gave it to me. Good job.
Alright, okay.
Last one, good.
So we'll do four more next week.
Okay, four more next week.
Next meeting, yep.
Next meeting.
Can you have those, um, the four next ones, um.
In the folder.
Yeah, I can review.
Sure.
That'd be good.
Those are, those are all boilerplate policies anyway, it's all standard stuff that is, you know, lawyer jargon anyway, so.
Yeah, so the next ones will be, um, debt management, reserve funds, balance, budget and purchasing policy.
Okay.
And within the purchasing policy, I think we can combine a small, um, small credit, town donations and purchase order policy, all within the purchase policy because we have separate ones.
I agree for each.
And I think just put them all together and try to be one.
Um, and I think the big question there is for us to, we probably want to have some time to discuss it because it will come up. Is what is the minimum, what is the minimum, or what, what is the maximum purchase order amount without select board approval? You know, right now.
Alright, I'll have them ready.
Doesn't need to be higher than that, basically.
Okay, uh, follow-up, town, town owned speed sign moved to state road, have we got any more on that, Zachary?
No, I'm waiting.
We gotta do this, this whole study, this, we were doing this.
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now, so I'm gonna, um.
I moved the sign so.
I'm gonna try to get info, what's that?
Perfect.
I moved the sign so it's going the right way.
Yeah, well, they put it there that way for a reason.
Why?
Why?
When you come into town, you would want to see the sign slow down.
Speed limit going both ways, they're gonna, they were, they're gonna do that too.
They were, said they were gonna put it on one end for one week and the other end for the next week.
Put it pointing one way one week and then the other way.
Always have to move it.
You gotta move that and move. I thought it should sit in emails, um, right by the barn, if, I was gonna ask him if we could put it there when you come in right there, that'd be a good spot.
I can follow up, I can just email him.
Yeah. That'd be a good spot.
Ask him to.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, he, he, it's one single placement for two weeks, so he puts it in another place, it can be for two weeks. But it has to be one week facing one direction, one week facing the other direction.
Oh, that seems silly, okay.
It's silly.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know who moved it.
I don't know who moved it either.
Fire, so fire alarm and which, I don't think anything.
Sorry, it's on videotape, sorry. Too late.
We can't, we don't need the camera anymore, okay?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then we get caught now.
They put it in the middle of town then or something, I don't know, it seemed funny.
I just, I, I said, it, he was saying, well, where did you have in mind for placement? And I said, well, the vicinity of Minard Hill Road would be good for coming into town.
Right.
And they put it the other way, so.
So it's fixed. Fire alarms, I don't want to talk about it.
No, we already did.
Alright. Fire alarms is sprinkled in this thing.
Oh, that thing, yeah.
Yeah, nothing with that, how about agenda for next meeting? Same stuff, um.
We can take the Christmas tree, put that, I don't know, take that off the.
Yeah, that can come off.
I think everything else is.
contacts with a petition.
Anyway, uh.
I'll move to adjourn.
Are you gonna let Harold know about him being the point of contact?
Yeah.
For that, Emily?
Oh, we have to let him know?
Probably should.
She'll let him know.
Yeah, I can let Harold know, and I'm sure you, Phillip, you would let him know, right?
He'll know.
By the way, by the way, Harold, you got nominated.
Well, I don't think it's a big, I don't think it's, well, that's the one I think, like everybody else's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll. So, I second it, I'm in favor, adjourn.
Alright, okay.
Okay.